Dear family father, thank you for your mercy and your grace. Please be with us tonight as we make decisions for the city and be with our first responders and all of our employees throughout the city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call to all of the city council meeting of June 17th, 2025. Andy, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Vicki.
JP Hodges.
Here.
Louis Short.
Here.
Lane Tubbs.
Here.
Pete Harris.
Here.
Chris Foster.
Here.
Ally Sugg.
Here.
Amy Bader.
Here.
Andy Eklund.
Here.
Attorney Prince.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Members of the press.
Let the record show we have a quorum. Thank you, Chief. Okay, let's get started. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes plus excellence as presented, May 20th, 2025, city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We're having a little test with our microphones tonight, so if there's a little feedback, just close your ears. Vicki, when you're ready.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of the payments journals dated May 1st through May 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of Street Fund Financial Statement Sanitation Fund, General Fund, Community Center O and M, and miscellaneous funds dated May 31st, 2025.
Approved. I'm going to motion to approve those.
Thank you, Louis.
I'll second.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? Vicki?
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The pink mug got him.
Next, do you have any questions for your supervisors?
No, but I want to thank the street department for yesterday. All the, I saw out, let's see, 10 o'clock, 9:30 yesterday morning in my area, scraping up the gravel and the dirt, and I'm sure they hit everywhere else too, but I appreciate it because we just re, well, you know, we recently had a guy in my neighborhood wreck on that rock, so I just want to say thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, huge shout out to them for, they've been busy, busy. Now, they've had to redo some work that they've already, like some culverts that they had put in and they've washed back out, so.
Now, do they, do they do that every time it rains a significant amount or just when it comes a gully washer like that?
Pretty much every time it rains. We got to clean out rates so that everything runs to them.
Because I know that spot there on Spruce where we had the accident, that's the first time I've ever seen it swept off was yesterday. So I'll make a point that it doesn't happen as hollering at the time.
You missed my flower bed where it washed out.
Okay, I got a super quick little bond update. Of course, this flash pad's coming along, but with as many rain days as we've had, I don't have an opening date or completion date yet because all this rain has set us back along with every, you know, the rain for everything. Okay, the storm water, we have had some contact with FEMA and Adam. There was a lot, some disconnection there, and we finally got that straightened out, and they've gotten the last studies that they needed from salt engineers to move forward, so we're waiting for FEMA to release the funding from, from the grant. And then we can get started with the storm water project downtown and then after.
But we've been working on this entire time.
Yeah.
It's not like it's been sitting there and doing nothing.
No, no, we've been working on it. Yeah, it's a.
There's been issues.
FEMA, Argott, Adam situation, and it's hard to get everybody on the same page, but.
Has the highway department approved it yet?
We're making progress. They are actually having a meeting tomorrow.
Oh.
Committee meeting, and so I'm hoping to hear back from Ms. Kelly Wiley when that's completed.
And that's to actually dig up and do the repair that's needed?
Yeah, they're going to pay for the repairs. It may be a reimbursement. She's got to get clarification. They've estimated about $500,000 that's going to be their part, or her part.
Because they're going to put in a big box culvert on, is that the, why we're trying to work together time frame wise, aren't they?
Yes.
Doing something?
Yeah.
This is under Main Street, 110.
At Third and Fifth.
They're going to have to dig it up to.
Third and Fifth.
Repair it and hopefully fix a lot of the drainage.
Third and Fifth Street.
On Main.
Yes, yes, on across Main Street.
And we should have something tomorrow afternoon.
Hopefully she can let me know something from the meeting they're having tomorrow. Or maybe, it may be Friday. Yeah.
Is that the final sting with that meeting far, is that it or?
Well, they actually want us to take over part of some of their section of highway in lieu of them paying for this, but first they've got to repair that section because it needs to be, they'd already planned to repave it. It's Highway 210, which sounds funny, Case Ford Road.
Yeah.
And a section out 110 West. It's less than a mile, but they've got to send somebody out to actually look at the culverts and things that need to be replaced, and they're going to resurface it.
Before we try to even look at it?
Before it's ours, yeah.
Case Ford Road's not in the city?
No, it isn't.
It's a state highway.
With the highway. It's 210 West.
Yeah. It's like a trade. Like they'll pay for this, but we want you to take over this. And that's fine, but I'm not going to take this over and pay to repair it, so you've got to come look at that. So that's in the works.
And did we ever get finished up with them on that ditch out the ball fields where they came in and held water?
Is it still home water?
I don't know, that's why I was asking. The one out, the one out on, uh.
About the pond?
Yeah, out by the pond.
I can check with the.
It's actually doing much better.
Is it?
As far as them being able to weed eat and mow and stuff there, they can. It doesn't have an outlet past the pond, and that's the problem. It needs to go under, it needs to go under the road to the lake, and that's the only way it can get a fall right there. But for our community, for our ball fields, it is a better scenario to be able to weed eat and do their work there.
It would be nice though with while that's going on, if it was taken over, if we could get them to turn that out and get it away from us. Probably not.
I mean, that might be something the local guys can do. We can work with them.
Be boring, be tearing up the highway, putting it underneath to take it across.
That's a.
That's true, that's true.
That's a definitely.
That's going to be a.
That close to the lake, you're going to have rock like crazy.
That's a.
That's a culvert situation too.
Right. Is that it on your?
I mean, we can have a conversation.
Well, just mention it to Kelly and see if we can throw it in while all this other stuff's going on. Maybe, I don't know. It's just, it's just deadheading right there.
Yeah. They can at least look at it.
Will the box culverts be taking the water to the same location that the water's going already, or is it going to be diverted anywhere else?
Um, I think it's going, it's going to take it to an outlet to Sulfur Creek.
It goes down in front of where Miles Shop was.
Yeah.
It goes down there and turns in front of that. It goes down to Sulfur Creek.
Are they just having to dig up across Main Street, or are they having to dig up all the way past the courthouse by your old shop?
Yes, yes.
They'll dig up the whole way from Main Street all the way down the road?
I think it's going to go up another block past Main.
To Cersei?
A block above Main.
Above, other way.
Oh, Spring?
Yeah, is it Spring or Sugarloaf?
Spring.
Spring, yeah.
So they'll have to, they're going to redo the whole stretch from a block above Main, across Main, a block below Main.
Yeah, all the way down Third.
Fifth and Third.
That is major, major.
And then another section at Fifth Street. Yeah, it's going to be huge. It's going to be a hot mess.
Well.
But then we get to put it back together and make it pretty.
Right, yeah.
And then that's when the beautification downtown goes in.
Yes, yes.
Now, we're going to get, what's our deadline to spend this bond money?
We're past that.
That's what I figured.
Yeah.
Are we in trouble? I mean, it's.
We will have, we will have to pay some arbitrage fees, but.
We will, or the previous engineer that screwed all this up will?
No, we will have to pay it, but it can come. Didn't he say it could come out of the bond money? And it's not going to be as much as we think it's going to be.
Once, uh, once everything is FEMA does their thing, what's the process behind, as far as waiting on bids and stuff like that, or is it going to be a long, is that going to be another 90 days?
Well, Salt Engineers is working on it with, and Kerry from White River Planning and Development, so they will put, work on the bids and put those out as soon as FEMA gives us the okay to release the funds. Because once they release the funds, we only have a certain, we have a window to be able to use those.
When do you think FEMA's going to?
Uh, just, I'm just waiting to hear back. They got everything else that they asked for last week, so.
FEMA is the problem.
Well, Adam was the problem because they had to turn everything into Adam, and then they had to turn it over to FEMA, and there was like one guy working one day a week in Little Rock at the Adam office. Yeah, it's been.
I could stuff drag on so much more.
Yeah.
Once we're through with the downtown flooding issues, which we have looked at for years, I would really like us to take part and take some kind of steps to look at neighborhoods because these rains weren't happening all the time, and now they are all the time. I, I, we've neglected neighborhoods for as long, as long as I can remember, not looking. I mean, we have no ditches in my area.
Yeah, there are some subdivisions that don't have any.
So the rain just gets getting worse and worse and flooding obviously.
It's a, it's a function of so many different things.
Well, there's been, and, and the previous engineers have a plan. I think they had a citywide plan, I think, for flooding, and I may have a copy of that, but they should have a copy of that as well, just to where was, you know, needed to hit first and so on.
I thought that's why we changed up the ordinance of new developments because.
These are all old developments.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, because the old developments.
Right.
Don't have what they need, and that's why they're flooding. So that's why we said, okay, if you put in a new development, you're going to have to, yeah. So how could we go, I just, how could we go in and put curb and gutters in all these places?
No, I'm not saying curb and gutter, just.
Yeah.
We just look at everything, I mean, dig them. I don't know, I, I don't know anything about it, but I'm just saying we need to take a look at our neighborhoods once we finish with the.
But do you think there was a citywide plan for fixing some of those neighborhoods besides just what was already?
Besides downtown, yeah.
Okay.
There, there are some considerable issues that we need to discuss at some point.
Right, I'm just saying. Let's see what happens once everything gets going and then where it takes it, and then what those natural landfalls, how they do after that.
Right. Well, I mean, like right now, I mean, if, if, once that culvert's fixed on Main Street there, then you're going to flood East Main even worse because it's already, you know, it was deep, somebody's posted a video of it, but I mean, it's going to run in above that, so that's just going to put even more right there. I guess it's all hitting that either way.
I'll have to get the plans out.
But the box culvert is there, is there to slow down that water.
Did you get the email sent? It's got the full project thing, it tells it's got different.
I did not.
You didn't?
Do you remember how far it goes down Sulfur?
Oh, boy. I never looked at that again.
I know, I was saying.
It's a 400-page report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's got all the maps and all the lines.
There is the email, I haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah, look at it because it's got everything in there.
Okay.
The whole hydrology, is that the right word?
Yeah.
Hydrology report?
Yeah.
It's got the whole thing.
Okay.
Do we have?
Some live readings.
Today, I think, the email today, I saw it on the email today. I just saw a fleet on my phone and didn't have a chance, or my watch, didn't have a chance to look at it.
Correct.
Do we have an ordinance in place for drainage? Like if, if, like that we hand over to a guy that, or that, you know, you're about to build a house up on wherever street, and if you don't, you know, keep, at least keep the drainage that was there the same, then you haven't passed the ordinance. Do we have something like that in place?
We do. Ronnie, what's that book called?
So we've got unified bill.
Yes.
Do you see?
Yes.
And in that, it does address, for instance, if you were going to build a house, you had a gutter in front of your house, or some kind of ditch in front of your house, your culverts that you put in for your drive has to meet or exceed the culverts upstream, downstream, everything, make sure the water flow stays correct through there. And then you can't build anything that's going to create, you can't commit, build land up, for instance, around the corner over here, the gentleman building a shop, and when he built that shop, he couldn't build that shop and let that water run off on the property next door, so they had to ditch on the edge of their property to create a ditch line out back to the state power. So, yeah, we've got stuff in place for.
For new development?
Yeah. For new development or renovation.
So, and is that, is that only subdivisions being made, or is that each individual's house, or, I guess if you just talk about that building, it's individual?
It'd be, right now, it'd be produced subdivisions because there's very, there's a couple of lots that are houses being built on that we address it and make sure there are big old subdivisions. There's a couple of houses that have been torn down recently.
Right.
Down south of Main Street in your area.
Right, yeah.
And those, when they go rebuild on those or build houses on those, that's stuff they have to look at if we make sure that the drainage is going to be sufficient and it's not going to create a flooding issue for neighbors.
Ronnie, do you have any luck on that one up on the corner?
Yes, we're, we're working on it, and I talked to him this way.
Thank you.
And I'm talking, I'm going to hold on people.
Thank you.
Great, any more questions? Some good discussion.
I, I will make a comment.
Sure.
You know, because we're, I know we talk about this, and we see the issues that it's caused when like the gutters and things aren't put in, but, so that's why we put that in in, in the first place, but I've also had builders since then tell me that they're not going to build inside the city limits anymore and put subdivisions in because we're requiring all these things, so, you know, I think it's just one of those things that you can't please everybody.
No.
And, and even though we're like, well, we see these subdivisions that are flooding and all this, and so we're going to require this from now on, and then some of these builders are like, well, we'll start building outside of the city limits then because we don't have to put in curb and gutter, gutter and, you know, tumbling shawls or wherever, like, so I just.
Well, that's okay, but it puts more stress on our infrastructure, so.
Yeah, so I just know that, like we said, I was just saying, we can't make everybody happy with these.
On anything.
On anything, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we, we live in a, in a place where, you know, there's so much downstream issues.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not like we're in a, like a, a, even plane or anything like that, so we, everything has to be.
Got to go somewhere.
Hand in hand, the leaves and limbs have to be picked up, the, the culverts have to be cleaned out by the homeowners, the homeowners have to help us too, because there's no way the lawn guys, I mean, yeah, I'm a lawn guy, I'm saying, there's no way the lawn guys can be Johnny on the spot every time a leaf falls out of a tree, you know, it just, there's things that happen that everybody collectively have to help with all this stuff.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business. Our new business, amendment to the employee handbook with the AI policy. And you all have time to review.
So do we, are we using Copilot? Is that what we're using, what we?
Yes, we have Copilot.
Okay, so does this, I guess if, if some of the other ones have become HIPAA approved later on, if we just add them to it?
Yeah, we can always change the policy and update it.
Then if, unless somebody else has got more.
Okay. We just need to, a motion to approve the policy for the handbook.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So Jake, Louis, and Lane. When you're ready.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you all. Next, IT policy. Does this need a motion to pass? It's just for information?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions about it?
I have just one, was this something that came about for a specific reason or just a change in this IT policy?
Yes, the auditors are here.
So we'll probably have a few things.
And, uh, yeah, there might be a little housekeeping there, so we just need it updated.
This is the one that's on the backup stuff?
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we need to do a separate policy for.
Destroying all.
Destruction.
Yeah, okay.
And I figure we can probably piggyback that off with a police department destruction order if we need to have something destroyed.
Right.
Okay, next, the charge off letter for sanitation. I don't like doing these, but we can't get ahold of these people. Jeremy's tried for a couple of months now, and we can't get any feedback, so this is our last resort.
I can't believe the bank.
US Bank?
I, I don't want to wrap them up.
I know, I know.
No, yeah, Montezuma Grill, they've got other restaurants around, I mean, as well, not in Heber, obviously.
It's, it's mainly just the bank, and I'm like, y'all are still in business.
For that amount of money too.
Yeah, and have customers probably still here too.
Oh, yeah, they do, they do.
I personally don't want to wrap that one up.
I, as a city attorney, I'd like to have some contact with who, with, I need some documentation on this, and I'd like to try to reach out.
Okay.
It may be futile, and, and it may be more time consuming than it's worth, but I'd like to have the opportunity to give it a shot.
Okay.
Yeah, we.
Okay, so.
We can find the registered agent.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, let's table it. Okay.
Just, just on US Bank, you can do whatever you want to do with the other ones.
That's the only one I have an issue with, and because it's over $2,000.
I know.
I'm like, you, would you not pay for like a whole year?
Right.
Like.
Like you didn't know this was going to go.
Yeah.
The rest of these are not in business, this, what's the first one?
KFC.
And that was the actual.
That was an individually owned franchise, I think, Montezuma, the same thing, Superior Transmission, but US Bank has got a registered agent with the Secretary of State, so we ought to be able to find somebody to contact and at least give me an opportunity to write a demand for it.
Please.
Fantastic.
Again, it might not work, but let's give it a shot.
Yeah.
I like it. Okay, so.
I make a motion to charge off from sanitation, the bill for KFC at a total of $405.92, the one for Montezuma Grill, total for $1,100, $10.03, and Superior Transmission for $306.96.
Second.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion? Vicki, when you're ready.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Ally Sugg.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you all.
Casey, may I ask one more question about the?
Absolutely.
Garbage, and sorry I didn't respond before, but are these flagged so that if these business owners attempt to open another business inside the city limits, that?
You've got to pay that first. We've talked about that before.
I know that the water department does that. They keep up with things like that. I don't see why we can't keep a list.
I mean, I just think it's prudent, because a lot of times, there's a, I keep up with some things that are going on in Conway, there's a restaurant there that has been flagged for non-payment of taxes, and they have opened multiple food truck businesses, multiple brick and mortar businesses, and they get shut down for payment of, non-payment of taxes, and they just open up something else under a different name, but it's the same people, and we should be, we should have a way in our city that we can stop that from happening.
Yeah.
Just like with these, you know.
How do you do it if they create a LLC under a different entity, even if it's the same owner, but it's a different business entity?
It's a different business entity, but, um, I mean, you can deny services, there, there's an individual or registered.
I'm just asking about security.[1503.88]
There, there's an individual, a registered, yeah, an individual, a registered agent, somebody for each of these that, that applies for a business permit or, you know, whatever. I mean, it's, they're still incurring personal liability, I think. I, I think there's an argument there for that. Would you agree, Chris, that there's an argument there?
Yeah, no, I agree.
That there as a business owner, they're incurring some personal liability?
Cause you could, if they wanna open a new account, not just the LLC, but you could make them put, you know, who's the incorporated it or the registered agent.
And here's the thing, the city council, that happens.
The president of that LLC.
The council has the, the opportu, if we're notified that somebody has, um, if you all are notified that somebody who owes the city money is, is applying for a permit or whatever, um, you have the opportunity to write an ordinance to address it.
Yeah.
So I, I'd just like to see these flagged, these personally, these names of these owners.
Okay.
Wouldn't that?
What?
Can I make a statement to all that?
Yes, please.
So wouldn't that follow the business license?
One thing that you do, um, when we started doing the mobile vendors.
Yes.
In order to do the mobile vendors programs, we had to put software in place. We did our permit building program software. But our mobile vendors software actually had a business licensing, a business permitting software, module and equipment. And that is in place and working. So that would be something for the council to consider. It could be a way that we would have a record of everybody.
Well, but could you, yeah, sure.
Yeah, it would flag it. I would set it up.
Set it up to, I mean.
If they did try to open under a different, um, you would have all their contact, cause it keeps their contact information, it keeps all their contact information. It keeps the registered agent, the LLCs, all that information is in there.
I mean, you know, like with Montezuma Grill, that, that's, it's not uncommon for a restaurant to also have a food truck and for them to go back and forth based on, um, how well or, or not well they're doing. You know, they may reduce brick and mortar to go to a food truck and so they may say the brick and mortar didn't work, but we're, we wanna bring our food truck back to Heber Springs because we have some established business there. Well, if they do that, then they should be flagged and we should be collecting this.
And all this would be under the, under that software. So it would flag that and we would note those things, they would catch those things.
That's helpful.
We're current.
Something for the council to think about. This could be an option is to go back and think about actions requiring them.
A business permit, right.
Yeah, we're actually using that, uh, software now for the A M P for, um, the short-term rentals to get a, their permit. Mm-hmm, and it's helped. And they can go through their website. And speaking of the website, it just got a facelift, so we're super excited about it. Ronnie's been working hard. It looks great and we can add to, um, if you guys look at it and find something that needs changed or added to, events or something, let us know.
Yeah, please let me know.
Yeah.
We've, there's, we've got some broken links we found, so we'll get that stuff.
Will you make it out to give me the, the documentation of these, the previous samples so that I can?
Did we vote all the way on the charge offs?
What?
I think so.
Yeah.
Did we, okay. I felt like we like went.
I know, it's busy.
Yeah.
Okay, open mic. Okay, announcements. Uh, River Rock is playing on June twenty-eighth at Spring Park. Uh, Freedom Fest is coming up. I can't believe it's almost here already.
Hey, talk about where it's gonna be, cause I get probably five texts a day going, really gonna be at Sandy Beach?
Freedom Fest will be at Sandy Beach.
Okay.
And they have a five K. It's on July fifth, both of those events.
How's that gonna be at Sandy Beach?
That's the question that I get asked.
Well, we're gonna leave the, uh, parking area open for people to stand or bring their chairs.
And in the past, we've had vendors there, right?
We're gonna push them back.
Okay.
Like into the trees?
Into the, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
By the restroom.
Okay. So our parking lot will be a people area, cause the water's right up to the parking lot.
Yes.
So is that where like the van will be too?
It's like last year.
Yeah, yeah.
The kiosk is gonna be open.
Uh, yeah, that day, uh, the chamber will collect money like they do with, have done in the past. Yeah.
And so the, where the fireworks gonna be shut off at? Still right there?
They're like backing it up closer to the dike.
Yeah.
Like on the dike is where it's gonna be.
We're gonna shut it? No, I'm gonna get that river started.
No, no.
They did that a few years ago and, and we stood by the whole hospital and it was unbelievable. We were right under them. We were like.
Well, it's gonna.
Like they were raining down on us.
Yeah.
It was really weird.
Uh, we are gonna have a open house for the fire department, July twenty-first, uh, from six to eight. Um, we encourage anybody that wants to see the new, the new digs to stop by.
When?
They're gonna cook out July twenty-first at six. It's their regular drill night, so it's a Monday.
We still had an email.
Yeah, um, Ryan has a flyer. I'll send that out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Ryan's not here, but it's six thirty this morning. Everybody that's either coming on or off, they're out there washing the trucks, everything. It would really look good.
They are proud of their station.
It's awesome.
Yes, it's awesome. It's beautiful. Stop by anytime.
So sixteen, six to eight on the twenty-first of July?
Yes, sir. And that's all I've got.
What do y'all think about the new sign?
Oh, yeah, our new wayfinding sign. Thank you, A M P Commission.
It looks wonderful.
It's so pretty.
I'm excited.
Yeah, we should be, that's.
I just kept watching that corner and we're like.
We've been, we've planned that a long time ago.
Yeah, but he told me like two weeks before it was in and I'm like, I keep driving by, looking at it, like, where's it at?
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank, thank you. Go home.